Good afternoon, welcome to the January 15th, 2025 regular board meeting. First item on our agenda is closed session, seeing as there is no public comment on closed session. We will temporarily adjourn from the opening going to close.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the open session for the regular Board of Education meeting for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. We have been in closed session. No action was taken during closed session. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed and is livestreamed and is available for viewing online. Also bear with me, this is only my second meeting, I'll probably stumble once or twice, so if I miss something, just let me know, please. Given that, can we all please stand for the flag salute?
Hi, I'm the Deputy President of the United States of America and to the Republic where all is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and with that, I will hand it over to Superintendent Daley for student reports.
Great, thank you, and before I jump into student reports, I want to recognize Kelly Searle, she is our new classified CSEA president, so thank you for joining us, Kelly. And as always, we start off our regular board meetings on the highest of notes by focusing on kids and hearing from kids, and tonight, it is Hooker Oak Night, so I'd like to invite Principal Emily Mullins to the podium.
Good evening, it's always a pleasure to be here to present to you. So I'm very excited, at Hooker Oak, one of the components of our program is community service, and community service can look like a lot of things, it can look like giving back to your school community, your local community, or to the global community. So tonight, I just wanted to highlight two ways in which Hooker Oak is modeling community service. The first one is happening actually as we speak, and a group of our first grade, one of our first grade classes is coordinating a donation drive to support the LA fire victims, and we wanted to personally invite you to stop by Bidwell Perk if you're able to tomorrow morning and grab your morning coffee and pastries. They are taking over Bidwell Perk, so if you can imagine twenty-two first graders behind the register, serving coffee, cleaning up, and a portion of the sales are going to go to support the LA fire victims. They're also doing a physical donation drive, we have flyers that we are going to distribute to you, as well as a letter with some additional information outlining the drive, and so we are collecting items that we're going to then send to the LA fire victims, so hope that you can make it, it should be really cute, and they have been really working hard on that, so do you want to hand that out real quick? These are student cut, as you can see. They have been involved in all aspects of this. And for those of you who don't know, Bidwell Perk is right around the corner from Hooker Oak, and they have been a wonderful partner to work with in the community, they've been very supportive of our students. Next, I'm very excited to also highlight a way that our students at Hooker Oak have given back to our school community, and specifically in supporting one of our students in the use of his AAC device. So I am very excited to introduce our Hooker Oak AAC ambassadors, a affiliate, who are affiliated with the Chico chatterbox, Chico chatterbugs, and Ms. Carrie Jamison, our speech therapist, is going to come up and introduce them and talk a little bit about what they've been doing.
Okay, hi, my name is Carrie Jamison, and I'm the Speech Language Pathologist at Hooker Oak School. I have a kindergarten student on my caseload who doesn't use his voice that much to communicate, he's a smart, mobile, creative, funny, awesome little guy named Lincoln, and his brother and his entire family are a vibrant part of our Hooker Oak community. Last year, Lincoln received a communication device, which is alternative, alternative and augmentative communication, otherwise known as AAC, and this is what the device looks like, and there's one picture maybe on the screen, if you want to show that. The other one, there we go, so that's his, the board, it's, this device was provided as part of his individualized education program, what we all call an IEP. While we were thrilled for Lincoln for this amazing opportunity, I feared that Lincoln would not be provided with adequate training with his new AAC device. How would we be in Lincoln's classroom every morning to help him get the device out of his backpack, make sure it was charged, add individualized programming specific to his classroom curriculum and needs, provide the modeling and training that Lincoln and his teachers needed, while also working with Lincoln to become a voice talker and an AAC communicator? But at Hooker Oak, we don't view challenges as a problem, but rather an opportunity for us to grow as a learning community. Our fantastic principal Emily, teachers Beth, Katie, Mr. D., and Ms. L., and our leadership advisor, Mr. Sean, nominated these fabulous students, and that was how our AAC ambassador team was formed. These students will now explain to you a little bit about AAC and how they help Lincoln each day with access to his device, modeling of the device for Lincoln and his peers, programming core vocabulary, and facilitating multiple communication opportunities. These four steps are key to a student's AAC success. So these, through this presentation, you will see how our AAC ambassadors are helping little acorns grow into talkative, multilingual, collaborative, mighty oaks.
Hi, my name is Hendrick, and I'm in fourth grade in Room Six at Hooker Oak. I help Lincoln on Tuesdays during SEO. AAC is short for Augmentative Alternative Communication. Augmentative means to supplement, so it includes things that make communication easier, such as text messaging, point, such as text, text messaging, or pointing. Alternative means instead of, so it includes things that completely replace verbal communications, such as communication device or iPad. AAC is all, is all of the tools we use to communicate, to communicate in addition to verbal speech, so most people use AAC every day. Some individuals cannot communicate verbally or have trouble being understood, so they rely on AAC to assist them. AAC does not hurt or delay developing verbal speech, in fact, studies have shown the opposite. Access to AAC can actually increase verbal speech.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, I go to Hooker Oak School Elementary, I'm, and I am in fifth grade. I help Lincoln every morning by getting his device ready. Individuals who use AAC need to be able to access their system all day, at all times, in all environments.
Hi, I'm Austin, I'm in fifth grade in Room Seven at Hooker Oak. I help Lincoln on Tuesdays and Thursdays during music, or library music. Access means that individuals should be able to touch, interact with, and use their AAC systems. They need access at all times, regardless of activity, behaviors, or their current skill level. AAC systems should not be left in a backpack, on a shelf, or away from the individual at any time during the day. Having friends and peers model using the device or on a copy is a great way to increase social interaction and motivation. Make it fun, talk about engaging, motivating, motivating topics. Get silly and make using the AAC system rewarding. An example of making it silly is yesterday in the library, I used the device to talk about what turtles eat, like pizza or pickles, and I got to verbally say no.
My name is Zoe, I'm in fourth grade, sorry, and my classroom is Room Nine, my teacher's Ms. Beth, and I help Lincoln during, Lincoln during my lunchtime. Modeling, using AAC means that you use a communication system while you talk to show how it can be used. For example, if you, if, if you said, "Let's go to the library," you could model "go" or[762.91][762.91]"go library" on the AAC system. You can also model what you think the AAC user is thinking or trying to say.
So, for example, so for example, if I wanted to ask Lincoln what he had for lunch, I might say...
What? Eat? Lunch? Food? Pizza?
Good job.
Hi, my name is Hayden, and I'm in fourth grade, I help Lincoln every Monday in fine, in his finances. Why modeling is important? Learning a new language always involves a significant amount of input, listening, seeing before you get output. Seeking, using the system, modeling helps both you and the AAC users on the system. It helps to increase motivation, and it shows that the AAC system is a valuable way of communicating. Fun fact, we just have shown that the AAC user needs at least two hundred communications of autonomy every day in order to learn to use the system as well. We are helping Lincoln have these communications operation.
Good job, and then, we wanted to hear from Lincoln, so...
My name is Lincoln. I go to kindergarten at Hooker Oak School. I use sign language, my device, and my voice. I like being silly. My mom says I am talking more, she is proud of me. Thank you for your time, have a good night.
Thank you.
When you see Lincoln next, please let him know that we said hello and it was nice to hear him.
And huge thank you to our students for helping others, that's what it takes in our world, is reach out and help those when you can, so thank you for doing that. So I'm going to move right on along and invite Ms. Mullins right back up to the podium.
All right, well, good evening again. I am very excited to introduce to you two extraordinary individuals who have made a huge impact on our Hooker Oak School community. I would like to invite them to come up and join me, Ms. Erin Horgan and Katie Rose, please come on up. So these two educators have, their dedication, compassion, and vision have left an indelible mark on our school community. Katie Rose is our school counselor, and Erin Horgan, our counseling assistant. Their tireless efforts and unwavering commitment to the well-being of our students have resulted in something that's truly transformative, and that is the creation of our Hooker Oak Wellness Center. At Hooker Oak, we take pride in being the mighty oaks, a school community that nurtures not only the academic growth of our students, but also their emotional strength and resilience. In every strong and flourishing oak tree, there are deep roots. Katie and Erin have become those deep roots for many of our students. Over the past few years, Katie and Erin have poured their hearts into creating our Wellness Center, which is a space that has become a sanctuary for so many of our students and our staff. They saw the potential of what this space could become, a place where every mighty oak feels safe, heard, and valued, whether it's creating an environment for self-regulation...
And they have been a wonderful partner to work with in the community. They've been very supportive of our students. Next, I'm very excited to also highlight a way that our students at Hooker Oak have given back to our school community and specifically in supporting one of our students in the use of his AAC device. So I am very excited to introduce our Hooker Oak AAC ambassadors, who are affiliated with the Chico chatterbox, Chico chatterbugs. And Ms. Kerry Jameson, our speech therapist, is going to come up and introduce them and talk a little bit about what they've been doing.
Okay. Hi. My name is Kerry Jameson and I'm the speech language pathologist, serving Hooker Oak School. I have a kindergarten student on my caseload who doesn't use his voice that much to communicate. He's a smart, mobile, creative, funny, awesome little guy named Lincoln. And his brother and his entire family are a vibrant part of our Hooker Oak community. Last year, Lincoln received a communication device, which is alternative and augmentative communication, otherwise known as AAC. And this is what the device looks like. And there's one picture maybe on the screen if you want to show that. The other one. There we go. So that's the board. This device was provided as part of his individualized education program, what we all call an IEP. While we were thrilled for Lincoln for this amazing opportunity, I feared that Lincoln would not be provided with adequate training with his new AAC device. How would we be in Lincoln's classroom every morning to help him get the device out of his backpack? Make sure it was charged, add individualized programming specific to his classroom curriculum and needs, provide the modeling and training that Lincoln and his teachers needed, while also working with Lincoln to become a voice talker and an AAC communicator? But at Hooker Oak, we don't view challenges as a problem, but rather an opportunity for us to grow as a learning community. Our fantastic principal Emily, teachers Beth, Katie, Mr. D, and Ms. L, and our leadership advisor, Mr. Sean nominated these fabulous students. And that was how our AAC ambassador team was formed. These students will now explain to you a little bit about AAC and how they help Lincoln each day with access to his device, modeling of the device for Lincoln and his peers, programming core vocabulary, and facilitating multiple communication opportunities. These four steps are key to a student's AAC success. So through this presentation, you will see how our AAC ambassadors are helping little acorns grow into talkative, multilingual, collaborative mighty oaks.
Hi, my name is Hendrick and I'm in 4th grade in Room 6 at Hooker Oak. I help Lincoln on Tuesdays during SEO. AAC is short for Augmentative Alternative Communication. Augmentative means to supplement, so it includes things that make communication easier, such as text messaging or pointing. Alternative means instead of, so it includes things that completely replace verbal communications, such as communication device or iPad. AAC is all of the tools we use to communicate in addition to verbal speech. So most people use AAC every day. Some individuals cannot communicate verbally or have trouble being understood, so they rely on AAC to assist them. AAC does not hurt or delay developing verbal speech. In fact, studies have shown the opposite. Access to AAC can actually increase verbal speech.
Hi, my name is Kaylee. I go to Hooker Oak School Elementary and I am in 5th grade. I help Lincoln every morning by getting his device ready. Individuals who use AAC need to be able to access their system all day at all times in all environments.
Hi, I'm Austin. I'm in 5th grade in Room 7 at Hooker Oak. I help Lincoln on Tuesdays and Thursdays during library music. Access means that individuals should be able to touch, interact with, and use their AAC systems. They need access at all times, regardless of activity, behaviors, or their current skill level. AAC systems should not be left in a backpack, on a shelf, or away from the individual at any time during the day. Having friends and peers model using the device or on a copy is a great way to increase social interaction and motivation. Make it fun. Talk about engaging, motivating topics. Get silly and make using the AAC system rewarding. An example of making it silly is yesterday in the library, I used the device to talk about what turtles eat, like pizza or pickles, and I got him to verbally say no.
My name is Zoe. I'm in 4th grade, sorry. And my classroom is Room 9. My teacher's Ms. Beth. And I help Lincoln during my lunchtime. Modeling. Using AAC means that you use a communication system while you talk to show how it can be used. For example, if you said, "Let's go to the library", you could model "go" or "go library" on the AAC system. You can also model what you think the AAC user is thinking or trying to say.
So for example, so for example, if I wanted to ask Lincoln what he had for lunch, I might say,
What? Eat? Lunch? Food? Pizza?
Good job.
Hi, my name is Hayden and I'm in 4th grade. I help Lincoln every Monday in his fine lines. Why modeling is important? Learning a new language always involves a significant amount of input, listening, seeing before you get output. Seeking using the system, modeling helps both you and the AAC users on the system. It helps to increase motivation and it shows that the AAC system is a valuable way of communicating. Fun fact, we just have shown that the AAC user needs at least 200 communications autonies every day in order to learn to use the system well. We are helping Lincoln have these communications opportunities.
Good job. And then, we wanted to hear from Lincoln, so.
My name is Lincoln. I go to kindergarten at Hooker Oak School. I use sign language, my device, and my voice. I like being silly. My mom says I am talking more. She is proud of me. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you.
When you see Lincoln next, please let him know that we said hello and it was nice to hear him.
And huge thank you to our students for helping others. That's what it takes in our world is reach out and help those when you can. So thank you for doing that. So I'm going to move right on along and invite Ms. Mullins right back up to the podium. All right. Well, good evening again. I am very excited to introduce to you two extraordinary individuals who have made a huge impact on our Hooker Oak School community. I would like to invite them to come up and join me, Ms. Erin Horgan and Katie Rose. Please come on up. So these two educators, their dedication, compassion, and vision have left an indelible mark on our school community. Katie Rose is our school counselor and Erin Horgan, our counseling assistant. Their tireless efforts and unwavering commitment to the well-being of our students have resulted in something that's truly transformative, and that is the creation of our Hooker Oak Wellness Center. At Hooker Oak, we take pride in being the mighty oaks, a school community that nurtures not only the academic growth of our students, but also their emotional strength and resilience. In every strong and flourishing oak tree, there are deep roots. Katie and Erin have become those deep roots for many of our students. Over the past few years, Katie and Erin have poured their hearts into creating our Wellness Center, which is a space that has become a sanctuary for so many of our students and our staff. They saw the potential of what this space could become, a place where every mighty oak feels safe, heard, and valued. Whether it's creating an environment for self-regulation, offering emotional support, or simply providing a moment of calm in a busy day, the Hooker Oak Wellness Center reflects their deep understanding of what children need to thrive, not only academically, but as whole, healthy individuals. To the students who walk through the door of the Hooker Oak Wellness Center, they are more than a counselor and a counseling assistant. They are the champions of their well-being, partners in their growth, and trusted sources of support. Their work extends far beyond what can be measured, touching the lives of not just the students they serve, but their families, their teachers, and our entire school community. Katie and Erin, on behalf of our entire mighty oaks community, thank you. Thank you for believing in the importance of mental health and emotional wellness. Thank you for dedicating yourselves to the success and happiness of every child who crosses your path. And thank you for reminding us that, just like the mighty oaks of our school's namesake, when we nurture the roots, our children can grow strong and resilient. Please join me in congratulating Katie and Erin. Thank you. Because I know all that work you do, you get thirsty. You've got to have time to keep that water. And we're going to get a picture real quick. We'll put you two in the middle. There we go. Sure. Whatever you want. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. So you may be wondering why there's this wall of white uniforms at the back of the room. And as the board and our community is where for a long time, we have had school resource officers. Our grant has gone away, but I'm really thrilled to say that we have had some fabulous individuals step up and really help us, especially with our extracurricular activities and supervision. So at this point, it's a real honor for me to introduce Chief of Police Billy Aldridge and Lieutenant Durkin. I'm going to ask them to come up and say a few words about our VIPS. Come on up. You got to have the podium. It's all ears. We also have a video to show of thanks to the VIPS as well, so we'll let you guys go first.
You want us to go first?
Yes, I do.
All right. Well, I didn't know I was going to be talking tonight. I thought I was just a bobblehead back there. So thank you, Kelly. Yeah, I'm okay. I don't really have to. Yeah, John can talk for us. But yeah, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of these individuals standing over here who volunteer so many hours of their personal time to our community. And without them, we couldn't do what we do as a police department. They are a vital piece of our mission and they help to augment where we just don't have the staffing to provide that service to our community. And in this instance, to the school district. And so what they provide to the school district is just that mere presence, which we know sometimes is all you need to stop something bad from happening. And they do an amazing job of that for our community. And from me as the chief of police, I always say there's no one position in the department that is more important than the other. It takes all of us doing our jobs, the way we were trained to do them, with professionalism, always providing that quality customer service, doing the right thing the right way every single time for us to be successful for our community. And I will tell you, this group over here, if I had to say who do I value the most in my organization, it would by far be our volunteers because we have lost the art of volunteerism in our communities across the nation. And these folks here stand in that gap for us and provide an excellent service to our community and provide thousands, tens of thousands of hours in community service to our community. And I want to say thank you to each and every one of them. I am very proud to be their chief and I'm very pleased that Kelly asked us to come by tonight and allow her to honor them. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Jeff Durkin, who is their liaison.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thanks a lot, chief. Appreciate that. Yeah. Exactly right. Yeah, to echo what the chief was saying, I'm their liaison. I'm the lieutenant that kind of oversees the VIPS, but I don't need to oversee them very much. They do a great job on their own. Some of my background too is I spent a lot of time with a lot of these folks when I was the school resource sergeant. So I spent a lot of time on campuses and spent a lot of time with them at football games. So I know how much they mean to the school district as well, and I know how much they love being at the schools, interacting with the students at the football games. They always have a great time doing that. So to kind of echo what the chief was saying, thanks to all of you. We appreciate you very much. You have no idea how much effort, you know, or how much we appreciate your effort that you put into the city and the police department. So thank you very much.
One of the things that the VIPS have done has been at our football games. And we have successful teams. Successful teams draw big crowds. And we cannot thank them enough for being there. Your presence is just amazing and people very much respect you. We have a thank you from Assistant Principal at Pleasant Valley High School, Joe Gallody. He could not be here tonight, but he was so adamant that he'd be able to thank you that he sent us a video. So let's go ahead and play that very quickly. With volume.
Gallody, Assistant Principal at PV. I wanted to take a moment to recognize the outstanding work of our VIPS and how much we appreciate them.
He's going to wish he was here.
Good evening. My name is Joe Gallody, Assistant Principal at PV. I wanted to take a moment to recognize the outstanding work of our VIPS and how much we appreciate them. Event facilitation has not gotten any easier. In fact, post-COVID, it just becomes increasingly more challenging annually. Add in that we no longer have SROs on campus, the Help With Event Support. I'm even more thankful for all that the VIPS have done for us over the past couple of years. For Chico High and Pleasant Valley High School, they've covered all of our football games. If you're just talking this year, that's 11 home dates where we're getting four to sometimes 12 for large events like Allman Bowl. And these events, I know most of you know, but just in case you don't, that is around 2,000 to 3,000 at most home football games in attendance. And then it gets up to that 5,000 mark, 4,000 to 5,000 mark for larger games like Allman Bowl or a big contest. The VIPS have proven to work very well with Chico PD and the site administration at both Chico High and Pleasant Valley High School. And we just want to say thank you, John Carver and all the VIPS. You guys have answered the call every time we call and we're really thankful for this relationship. So congratulations again on your award you're receiving this evening and thank you.
So I do again want to say thank you for everything you do for not only our schools, but our community. We see you downtown. We see you everywhere. As a small token of our appreciation, we do have a certificate that has every single one of you listed on the top. My understanding is you like to hang these at the headquarters and so it does have all of you here. However, I will tell you, if anyone would like one for your home and individualized one, we're more than happy to do that for you as well. And I also want to ask Mr. John Carver to come up. Do not worry. I will not give you the mic, so that's good. I do. John was a beloved member of Chico Unified until he retired, but he is really the reason that we even knew about and pulled in the VIPS. Thank you so much for doing that. It has been such an incredible support to our schools. So keep showing up, keep being there, and know how much you're appreciated. And I will turn.
You can take the boy out of the school, but you can't take the school district out of the boy.
Thank goodness. Thank goodness. If we can get a picture of all of the VIPS, that would be awesome. John's going with me. Tom? You're distributing. You're taking it back to the office. After the picture.
And I did want to.
Before you go, we just wanted to say thank you also.
And John Carver scared the bejesus out of me one day when he stopped by my house unannounced just to check on me because he'd heard that I hadn't been out for a while. I just, what you guys do to take care of the community is just so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This one was actually for you. And that concludes my report.
So while we are kind of getting resettled, we are going to move on to item number six. If any members of the board have any announcements for the general public? Anybody have any upcoming events or other exciting news they want to share?
Well, I went to my first reading pals last Thursday and tomorrow I get to go to my second one. So I'm really excited about that.
Very exciting.
Yeah, at Citrus Avenue Elementary.
Doesn't look like there are any other announcements. So we're going to move right along to item seven, which is items from the floor. So items from the floor is the time for any speakers from the public who wish to address the board on a topic that is not on the agenda. We do take signups ahead of time online. And then if there's extra time and speakers still wish to speak, we can usually accommodate that. So as a reminder, speakers have three minutes to address the board. There's a beautiful timer back there. You'll get a little warning buzz at 30 seconds to let you know you have 30 seconds remaining. The board can listen. We cannot respond to speakers on items that are not agendized. So while we always appreciate your input, we can engage in the back and forth on these topics. Yeah, there's another opportunity to speak from items on the floor at the end of the agenda as well if something comes to mind during the course of the meeting. That said, I believe we have three speaker card requests. So we'll lead off with Ms. Becky Brown, please.
Good evening, Chico Unified Board members. It's nice to see you returning members and nice to see you new members. Gail, I think I had your kiddo in class at one point. I remember her handwriting, I believe. So I am Principal Superintendent of Inspire School of Arts and Sciences and I am here on behalf of my school to submit those beautiful boxes back there, which contain our charter renewal petition. So happy reading and I'll be back next month to talk a little bit more about our school and what we do for kids. And thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tanner Schaefer.
Good evening. My name is Amber Hayes and I'm the Principal Superintendent at North Country School.
My name is Tanner Schaefer. I'm the Vice Principal at North Country School.
We are just here to submit our charter petition and renewal on behalf of North Country School for your approval and our big box is over there for you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can only guess what the next speaker might want to talk about. Michelle Yezbick?
Okay, yes, you guessed it. I'm Michelle Yezbick and I am here representing a charter school. It's Sherwood Montessori and I'm submitting a charter petition for renewal for your consideration for approval. I'll be back next month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing all of you next month when we talk about this. And seeing as that was so fast, are there any other members of the public here who would like to address the board on an unagendized item?
My name's Elaine Ward, for those of you who may not know me. Very impromptu sharing that I wanted to do today. So my son started 6th grade this year. Going into 6th grade, I was a little nervous about him being bullied. Very nervous about him being bullied, mostly because he has a hard time with social interactions. So no surprise by me, he was bullied earlier this year. We were able to get it under control and identify those who were bullying him because he has the same PE class with his sister. Had his sister not have been in that class, I don't know if we would have been able to fully address or talk to those students to help them improve their behavior. With that situation, he was bullied with one group of students and it was addressed. Not even a week later, another group of students started bullying him as well. And my kids brought it to my attention, so I reached out to the Vice Principal and told her, you know, what was going on. She told me that the first group of boys or students were good kids and they weren't doing it to be malicious to him. I told her that malicious or not, they were doing it to laugh at him and that is bullying. The second group of students were a little more rough. And so that approach with them was a little different was my interpretation based upon this email exchange that we had. Good kids or rough kids, bullying is bullying and we can't make excuses for those kids. I have a very personal experience from when I was in high school. A good kid was bullying a student with Down Syndrome and he was doing inappropriate gestures. The Vice Principal of my high school came across our quad and was getting ready to take away the student with Down Syndrome and give him a punishment. I literally ran across our quad and told him, "That is not the case. He's not doing this on his own. It's this student over here that was encouraging him." Group of students laughing at him, "But this was a good kid. This was a pastor's son who should have known better." Good kids, rough kids, bad kids, whatever you want to call them, they all need to be treated the same. The approach needs to be the same because had my daughter not been, I'm so sorry, had my daughter not been in his PE class, I strongly feel it would have been a different outcome for so many reasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Elaine, for sharing. Mr. Caldero will reach out to you.
And thank you, Kelly, for following up on that. We are going to move on to item eight. Oh, we have another. I'm so sorry. I didn't see back there. Please, by all means.
Oh, it's different when you're up here.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Kinzavage. I use she/her pronouns. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I'm really sorry. When I was at last month's board meeting, some of the public comments were very worrying. Some people came up during public comment time to spout about parents' rights and student safety. Specifically at the last meeting, one of them stated that she was the only candidate who would run with student safety at heart and has heard nothing from the board regarding student safety or bringing SRO officers back, despite the fact that Trustee Hayes had literally spoken about wanting to do that five minutes previously, but I guess they weren't listening to her. And as for these commenters' claims that they care about student safety and parents' rights, they really only seem to care about some of the student's safety because the parents' rights they seem to be so concerned about are the parents' rights to have their LGBTQ+ kids outed forcibly. Not a good public speaker. So that they're upset about is there is a state law that bars school officials or teachers from forcibly outing students and without their consent. And they don't like this law and they apparently choose to express that by yelling at all of you who did not enact this law and because they want the teachers to ignore that law. I'm going to share some not fun statistics now. Considering 68% now. Considering 68% of LGBTQ+ youth experience rejection from their families after coming out, and 25% are actually kicked out of their homes, it's not really safe to forcibly out kids. The fact that 40% of homeless youth are LGBTQ+, it's not safe to out kids. And also, LGBT kids only make up 9.2% of the overall population, so that's a really, like, that's a difference. Considering the suicide rate of LGBTQ teens is four times that of their peers, it's not safe to out kids. 39% of teens considered committing suicide in 2024, and, sorry, 39% of LGBTQ teens, and 46% of trans and non-binary kids considered it. One in 10 attempted. So again, to those commenters, not really safe to out kids. So, thank you. That is aggressive. Laws like that protect, laws that protect our students are really important because of all of those scary statistics, but also because the alternative is really worse. States that have enacted anti-trans laws saw a 72% increase in trans youth suicide attempts in one year. That's 72% more trans kids tried to kill themselves in one year after a law passed, and now I'm out of time. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. For all of our speakers, it is not easy to get up in front of that microphone. Are there any other speakers, so I don't make that mistake again? Anybody else? All right. Let's move on to item eight, which is the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the board would like to pull for further discussion? Or anything the admin needs to pull for any reason?
Just a question of clarification. Do you have to pull it to discuss it? Can I just make a comment? Or no?
Yeah, there's no reason not to make a comment.
I was just surprised to see that, that, you know how much we spent on mandarins? Over $9,000 on mandarins. That's a lot of mandarins. I wonder what the tonnage was. It was interesting.
That's actually worth noting, since, you know, we do, we can't reduce food waste, but mandarins is one of those things that often... Yeah. Outside of mandarins, anything else we need to talk about? Seeing none, do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent calendar. I believe this is our first action, so we do a voice?
We will, if there is a second.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Hayes. It will be a voice vote, so say your name as you register your vote. We'll start over there. Unless there's any discussion or debate first. All right, take it away.
Robinson, aye. And I think I had those mandarins all in my backyard tree. Oh, what a year for mandarins it's been.
Hayes, aye.
Lando, aye.
Olson, aye.
Conkin, aye.
It is unanimous. And that takes us on to item nine, our discussion action calendar, which starts off with 911, the, a resolution number 1672-25. Julie.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. First off, we have a resolution 1672-25, which was actually passed at a previous board meeting, but we found that there was an error in the, some of the text. So the resolution, the purpose is that the state wants the board to acknowledge that with the Proposition Two that was passed in November, that the board understands that a facilities master plan will be required in order to get funding under Proposition Two. The language that's been added to the previously approved resolution is just charter schools included. Currently, Chico Unified is the applicant on Inspire School of Arts and Sciences grant application. So I guess that's the situation that could come up in the future. If we were to be the applicant for any other charter school, they would need to be, you would need to acknowledge that they would also require a facilities master plan. So that's what that resolution is all about. Any questions?
Does not look like it. Thank you so much. It's kind of exciting. This is our first resolution with that dash two-five at the end. Brand new year. Okay. Are there any, so she already asked, are there any other technical questions or clarif, questions, clarifications from the board? Is there any public comment regarding this topic? Are there any motions associated with this topic?
Mr. President, I move approval of the resolution 1672-25.
I'll second it. So we have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Lando. Any discussion or debate? Since our last vote was unanimous, I'm going to ask you all to simply say aye if you agree with the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? It is unanimous. Thank you so much. Let's see, we are on to 912, which is also Ms. Kissel, I'm sure, Measure K project requests.
Thank you. So the Measure K Charter Facility Committee met at the end of December, and they brought forward a project for recommendation for Measure K funding under Sherwood Montessori School. It's actually a combination. It's a true-up of previous authorizations that they underspent on, so cleaning up that accounting while also requesting funding for two new projects. One being a new air conditioning unit for a portable classroom building for $16,000, and the repair of a roof for $6,000. Overall, it's an add, after you credit back the underspent funds, of $12,556.
So if I may, then, the items that are listed as Project G and H are the opposite. Those are things that went a little over the expected budget?
Yes.
Okay. I certainly want to thank the folks at Sherwood for being cognizant of, you know, spending public funds wisely and pitching pennies where they can. That's awesome. Are there any other questions or comments for this one? Do we have any public comment? All right, is there a motion?
I'll motion approval.
Thank you so much. A second?
I'll second that motion.
I'm so sorry. I was asking if there was a second, not offering one.
Yes, I second.
My bad.
And she does too.
Okay. So let's go with a motion by Member Hayes and a second by Member Robinson. Is any discussion or debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? It is unanimous. Thank you so much. And 913 is also Ms. Kissel. It is Facilities Master Plan Phase Four Restroom Renovation, Phase One and Two. Let's talk about restrooms.
Well, it's pretty exciting, really. So when we were developing the update of the facilities master plan last fall, we reached out to all the school sites, to the students and the parents and the staff, and, and then prioritized their, their needs and wants. Really big issue that was identified, and I'm not, I'm sure you're not surprised, is the condition of restrooms throughout the district. So there's an allocation of $14.3 million toward restroom renovations district-wide in the master plan, so we're bringing that forward as a real project now. We have done all of the investigation, looking at the restrooms, what we want to do to them. We have an architect on board who you're already aware of, and we're, we're getting ready to start the design process for all of those renovations. We're going to split them into two phases, first phase in 2025 and the second phase in 2026. We'd love to do them all at once, but we're trying to, you know, make them as, the smallest impact to operating schools as possible. That's why we've separated them into two different phases. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval for the design fees for Phase One, which comes out to be $544,942, and that's for, like I said, the Phase One projects. And then the overall budget for the projects of 14.3. Currently, our estimates are coming in lower than that number, and so we would hope that we can save money and then roll some of those dollars onto other impactful projects in the district. So I just want to mention that the restroom renovations do not include schools that we've already modernized, like Neale Dow or Marigold, because their restrooms are already completed. The focus is on student and staff experience, right, having a clean, nice restroom, functional. Also, Americans with Disabilities Act improvements, and then all gender restrooms during the school day and for evening events, which is a state law that we have, must comply with. And so we're also prioritizing those in these projects.
I'm super excited about this.
Yeah.
The state of our restrooms in some of these older schools is something that is remarked upon a lot, and it's really exciting that we can make a positive change in it. I see that the Phase One is scheduled to begin in 2025. Do we know when those are scheduled to be done, like by the end of the 2025 year, by the end of the '25, '26 school year? What are we looking at?
Yes, by the end of '25, '26. A lot of the work will occur over the summertime. Some projects won't be able to be completed during the small 10 weeks of summer, so they will bleed over. So I assume by next fall, Phase One would be completed.
Excellent. This is really exciting. Like I said, any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Please.
I was fortunate enough to spend one semester at Chico High, close to my retirement, and boy, does this make me happy, because there are just not enough functioning toilets on that campus. So, whew, thank you.
I'm assuming that the school projects that are under Measure C are also, they're not going to see this, they, they won't have any?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, so Rosedale, Chapman, and Parkview are also not going to be included because they're getting a complete rebuild.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Are there any other comments or questions for clarification, I should say? Do we have any public comments regarding this one? Seeing none? Okay. And we need a, we do need a motion on this one.
I make a motion to approve.
Excellent.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by a Member Olson and a second by a Member Conkin. Is there any more debate or discussion on this topic? In that case, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none? It's unanimous. Thank you so much, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, and that takes us to item 914, which is Resolution 1671-25, Accounting of Developer Fees.
Yes. Hello, Board. So this evening, I have two different items that both have to do with the 2023, 2024 school year. The first one, Chico Unified has levied school facilities fees pursuant to the various resolutions that this board has passed, most recently in May of 2024. Per ed code, we're required to complete a developer fee report, which is attached to this item. This includes expenditures that we had throughout the year out of this fund, revenues that were collected as part of the different city and county building projects, and as well as projects that we plan to pay for partially out of this fund in the future. So that's all I have for you on this item. Are there any questions?
Not seeing any questions. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment? And then do we have a motion?
I motion approval.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent. We have a motion by a Member Hayes and a second by a Member Robinson. Any further discussion or debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Are you staying with us?
Yep, one more.
All right, take it away, please.
Okay, so the second item I have for you tonight is the 2023, '24 Independent Financial Audit. So as a school district, we're required to contract with an external audit firm. Our 2023, '24 audit was completed by Horton McNulty in Saturn, which is a local firm, HMNS, and they've been working with us for, this is their fifth audit that they've completed with us. As a part of the annual audit, HMNS visits our district office during the summer for the first round of testing. Then they go out to the school sites in September to test there, and then come back finally to the district office in October for our financial review. During these visits, the auditors look at dollars we've spent, the funding that we've received, and also our compliance with local, state, and federal guidelines. The compliance portion of this review covers many different aspects of how we operate as Chico Unified, including communication with parents, staffing ratios, whether or not we spent grant funds appropriately, et cetera. The testing completed during these visits takes a lot of coordination, so I just want to say thank you to everybody at Chico Unified that has helped with this, so we can get documents back to our auditors in a timely manner. As part of the 2023, '24 review, we had two audit findings. The first had to do with internal controls in our associated student body account. And so because of this finding, we did a training with the, sorry, I don't want to mess up its fic mat, but it's called the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team to address best practices so that our school sites can implement those in the future to avoid these findings in the future. The second audit finding had to do with compliance under the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, otherwise known as ELOP. Under the ELOP grant, we are required to offer an additional 30 days to our transitional kindergarten through sixth graders. During the 2023, '24 school year, we did offer these additional days to our TK, our transitional kindergarten through fifth grade, but because we paid for the sixth grade program out of a different funding source, we did not offer the additional, the full additional 30 days. Due to this compliance finding, Chico Unified was assessed a penalty of $370,000. That'll be recorded as a part of restricted revenue this year in the 2024, '25 school year. And we've already implemented changes in the '24, '25 school year so that we don't have this finding again. And on page four of the audit report, HMNS states that after completing the review, they feel that aside from these two findings, that our financials reflect appropriate governmental accounting standards, and everything else is reported accurately. Are there any questions in regards to the audit?
Um, Charis, I, repeat again, please, the amount of the, the fine for the finding on the second issue.
It's $370,000.
That's what I thought you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, not okay, but thank you.
Yeah. It was the first year that we were tested on this program, and this has unfortunately happened to a lot of school districts. It's a large grant, and there were a lot of compliance tied to this program, so we're not the only ones, unfortunately, got hit with a penalty.
You said that you, we've made changes for the '24, '25 school year?
Yes.
So what are those changes?
We've added days and made sure that all of our program days for the sixth graders that are offered are nine hours so that they'll all count towards the compliance.
So sixth graders will still be receiving services at their site? They're not, because when I read the report, it said that one way of fixing it is to allow sixth graders to go to elementary school campuses?
Correct.
But that's not what we're doing.
I'm going to let Tina respond to that.
It depends on what timing. The program has to be offered for sixth graders to participate. That's being paid for. So for example, a good example is spring break coming up. Oftentimes, the sixth grade participation is fairly low during that week. So to have staff there for very few kids is typically not financially feasible, so they are invited to attend the program at a site nearby. Oftentimes, there are siblings there and friends, so it does work out for families.
So are they, are we limiting which elementary school they could visit? Or like, because, I mean, they feed in, different elementary schools feed into different junior high schools.
We would certainly want them to choose the one that's most appropriate for where they live, their family situation, friends, things like that.
So are we then also providing transportation for these students from junior high to the elementary schools?
No, that's not part of the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
And my understanding is that the fine is assessed not as us returning money to the state, but as in a reduction in funding next year?
Correct. Yes. There will be a reduction in the 2024, 25 allocation for this program.
And then I also, I noticed that the associated student body funding, one was a carry, one we had been cited for previously.
Correct.
And so that's being handled?
Yeah, we've been trying to do a training with FICMAT for the last few years. They haven't had availability, so this was the first, luckily, Butte County all got together. So we must not be the only school district that's struggling with this. We've had a lot of turnover at our secondary sites in the last couple of years. So I'm very glad that we were finally able to attend a training, and I think that'll help us in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I guess my question's to the table over here. Are you all comfortable with the controls we've put in place so that the accounting with the student body funds is not going to be replicated?
Yes, I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable with the steps that we've taken in place. We, like Sharice alluded to, we've had some new staff, so we've done some individual training, as well as the county line training. ASB is always kind of a tricky area, and there's a lot of rules and a lot of compliance. And so it is something that annually we just need to stay on top of to ensure that the money generated by students is used by students appropriately.
Absolutely, okay. Any further questions? Do we have any public comment on this topic? Do we have a motion on this topic?
Oh, I'll jump in. I'm familiar with the issue of the student store issues. I mean, I was on campus in the 70s and 80s, and it was an issue then. So I know it's hard to make sure that with all the changing regulations, that our staff stays, you know, up to date. So thank you for the work you do in coordinating that training. Thank you. I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by a member Robinson, a second by a member Hayes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we are on to, something maybe a little, a little more. I don't know. I'm curious to see what we have to say, but this is what I'm trying to say. We're looking at Resolution 1673-25, which is our certification to the Board of Supervisors of Butte County regarding the proceedings of the November 5th General Obligation Bond Election.
Yes, I think this is a pretty exciting agenda item. We've talked about the successful passage of Measure C by the voters of the Chico Unified Geographic Boundary, which was really exciting. So one of the steps under state laws that this board basically passed a resolution, certifying these results. So Tyler, if you would bring up the PDF that's attached to this and go to page 19 of 20 at the top there. I do want to point out Measure C, Chico Unified School District Bond. There were 51,798 votes cast for and against the bond measure. 32,951 were a successful yes, which puts us at a passage rate of 63.6%. We're only required to have 55%, so it's really encouraging that a large percentage of our community got behind the bond, saw that we're using these dollars responsible, responsibly, and looking forward to redoing complete renovation, rebuild of the three elementaries that Julie spoke about earlier.
And purely as a comment, while I am hugely grateful to our community for approving this bond, I think part of it also was that they simply saw the need, that some of our schools are in pretty poor shape, and this is the only way to improve it. So I'm glad we did it now, because as we all know, it would have cost more in the future. But it is on to us now to make sure that we spend this money very carefully and in a way that best serves our students over the long term. Any other comments or questions? Do we have any public comment? Then is there a motion on the table regarding this item?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1673-25.
I'll second.
All right, I believe that was a motion by a member Olson and a second by a member Hayes, right? All right. All, any more debate discussion? Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm moving too fast, and I apologize for that.
Just happy it passed.
Yeah, absolutely. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you all very much. It will be exciting to see these process, projects begin. We are on to Resolution 1674-25, that's item nine one seven. This is the Chico Unified School Board Adopting Bylaws Governing Measure C Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Yes, so thank you, Board, for certifying those results. It's very exciting. So the other component, and President Lando talked about this, is making sure that we spend the dollars appropriately. So part of state law is that we have to have a bond oversight committee who ensures that the expenditures that are made with bond dollars are applicable to the ballot language that the voters approved. So we already have this oversight committee established for our 2012 Measure E and our 2016 Measure K. So we're moving forward with the same oversight board for Measure C, with the exception of one member who has now termed out. There's a maximum of three, four, three, four-year terms. The other members are on, so we will have two vacancies on the Oversight Committee Board. One is a representative from a bona fide taxpayers' organization, and another is a representative from a parent or guardian of a student enrolled in our school, and then that individual is also involved in a parent-teacher organization as well. So I will say shout out to our community. If you want to put in an application to be on this Oversight Committee, our website is updated. If you search for Bond Oversight Committee, you will find that. And so attached here is the list of individuals, as well as all of the associated bylaws related to the Oversight Committee.
So for our board members, first of all, if you do know of anybody who would like to get involved in this way, who's a member of one of these organizations, please have them reach out. And secondly, I know there was debate during the election season about how the money would be spent, whether we would be spending it appropriately. This is the organization, and these are the people to whom you should reach out if you have concerns about whether what we're doing is within the, within what the community voted on. So it's very good to have access to this. Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions of clarification?
I will say that I reached out. I don't, maybe Kelly can help me with her last name. Beth, she's the...
Bradley.
Beth Bradley, thank you. Was the PTA president of Rosedale, and she and Lauren were the two spearheads for Yes on C. And I wrote Beth, and I invited her. I said, "We have this vacancy, and it seems very appropriate" that since she was, you know, instrumental in getting this passed, that I'd love to see her on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee as well. And she's told me, she wrote me back, that I can't find it anywhere, so I'll try to reach out to her again. But it's online that she would apply?
It's on the, the application is on the Chico Unified website. If you just search under Bond Oversight Committee, the application's there, and the steps on who to submit it to.
Okay.
And then once, once the position is filled, we take it back to the board, so you can officially appoint them to that position, and they would move forward in that capacity.
Okay. I'll see if I can find it and then link it and send it to her in an email, because I think that would be great to have her there.
I don't know about this. Is it also plausible that if we had a community member who just wanted to be on it, they could then join a certified taxpayer organization? I don't know how those work at all.
They just have to be, they have to be an active member of a taxpayers' association, essentially, or organization, and then they could absolutely apply.
Okay. Thank you. I know that can be, that's a slightly harder seat to fill.
Jacqueline, could you, for the public, like, I didn't know what would be a certified taxpayers' organization, and so I asked that question.
Yeah, the most typical, there is a California Taxpayers Association that's kind of at large throughout the entire state. And then there's a Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association as well. Those are kind of the two most common that people are associated with.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any public input on this one? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion on this topic?
Mr. President, I'll move approval of... Okay, where did its number go? Resolution 1674-25?
We are on to four, I think.
1674, 2...
Oh, 1674, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by a member Robinson, a second by a member Conkin. Any further debate or discussion? Being so agreeable today. I love it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that takes us all the way to item 9.2.1, which is just an informational time for anyone on the board who wants to share anything that they learned from our California School Board Association Conference, or put anything on the radar or agenda of either the public or the rest of the board that might be up for future discussion based on what we learned.
One big thing that I got is, let's go from I to we without losing me. And so I would, it was an amazing training, if you will. It was very, the pacing was incredibly good. It wasn't overwhelming, and so you could really just absorb the information. We had great table discussions. It was, I'm looking forward to going again, and I really, I'm sorry that, Eileen, you weren't able to make it, but boy, we were able to just kind of connect as a team, and that felt really good, just to get to know everybody beforehand. So, yeah, it was, I can't say enough about the training.
I also want to just be, I want to express my gratitude to the district for facilitating that. It was a lot of information. There were multiple ideas that came out of it, and I actually, there were, there were issues that I'd asked earlier, and I don't have them up right now, but it was nice to get feedback from the district after asking those questions. And I too look forward to more training. It's a, it's a big job, and there's a lot to it. So thank you.
Yeah, it was a very useful conference. I, in a stunningly, Lando moved, forgotten my notes today, so I would love actually to have this item on the agenda again next time, because I do have a couple sessions I really wanted to highlight. But I don't want to be scrolling through my phone right now trying to remember which sessions I was talking about. So I apologize.
It was also valuable for me as well, and it was nice to have an opportunity to not only connect with our two new board members, but also we had some great time and opportunity to get to know Greg, who's going to be filling in or starting as superintendent in, well, I guess, in the summer, right?
Yeah.
In the summer. So that was a great opportunity for us to get to know him and hopefully ease that transition. I also didn't bring my notes, but I think probably the standout breakout session for me was in regards to safety, which was pretty timely considering it was following the more recent event in our community. So thank you again, yeah, for sending us. It was, hopefully, money well invested in our board.
I think it is. Every year I come back with something new that I either want to ask questions about or just, you know, bear in mind as we have these discussions. I've never not found one of these very useful.
I want everybody to know that Rebecca has a really cute cow.
That is the takeaway that we needed from this. All right. On that note, there is no action. This is just informational for us to share with each other. So I don't want to cut the conversation short. But if there's nothing else, I would like to move to item 10, which is our second items from the floor. Do we have any speakers who would like to address a non-agendized item? Seeing none, do we have any board requests to agendize an item? I don't think we've seen any of the forms come in, but no? Okay, great. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Seconded. All in favor of adjourning? Say aye. We are adjourned.